Good evening, everyone. Uh, we're gonna get started. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Gabbard.
Here.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Present.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Here.
Mr. Pressler?
Here.
Mr. York?
Present.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance in your main standing?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's valid, gather. Our Father, we come to you through the Lord Jesus, and we come to you, Lord, with great thanksgiving in our hearts. Uh, Lord, I'm sure there are many that are caught up in the, uh, end of, of the school year and much joy, much victory. And, uh, Lord, we thank you for the, thank you for the accomplishments of this past year. Now, Lord, we also know that there are many hidden hurts represented here in, in this room tonight. Uh, Lord, we pray for, uh, your peace, for your love and comfort. Uh, Lord, that it might just be manifested more greatly than ever before, uh, because the needs are so deep. Lord, we're grateful to you for, uh, the Edgewood Schools, for our Board of Education, for the officers. Lord, uh, we ask your blessing upon each of them. Uh, Lord, that you'll give them the insight, the initiative that's needed in order to leave, lead to greater heights, in order to make a greater difference. Uh, for Lord to know that there are so many needs represented in our community. So, Lord, we cry out to you, pray for your wisdom for this meeting, your guidance. We thank you for your goodness and pray that each might experience it increasingly in the days ahead. We pray it together in Christ's name. Amen.
All right, we're gonna look for a motion for the approval of the agenda. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt?
Second.
Second, Mr. York. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
Next, we have presentations. Mrs. Spaggy, would you like to start?
Yes, I would. I'd like to bring Mr. Gegen forward, and he's going to recognize our National Merit Scholars. And I understand that we have more this year than we've ever had in the past. Is that correct?
Yes.
So please tell us a little bit about that and, uh, recognize our students.
Aaron, do you wanna stand up? Actually, come on over here. So, uh, so Aaron is our National Merit finalist, and so he was recognized at the football game in the fall for being National Merit semifinalist, and that is due to his PSAT score his junior year. They look at that score, their index score, and then he's, based on that score, he state gets a certain number of people for the National Merit semifinalist. He completed that paperwork in December and then was recognized a couple months ago to be a National Merit finalist. And, uh, this is very prestigious to less than 1% of the students that take the test, become National Merit finalists, and, you know, lots of universities, I believe, Aaron, you told me about, University of Alabama offered him, what, six years of free education at that university. Uh, he's choosing to go to an Ivy League school, so a really good school, but also a National Merit semifinalist. Nothing wrong with Alabama, I'm sorry. But, uh, National Merit finalist, part of that is also recognition, but also a scholarship as well. So Aaron has been, um, it's been a real pleasure to have you at Edgewood High School these past four years. He did his multiple things, correlators, academic team, uh, he was our valedictorian. We just wanted to congratulate you one last time and also say best of luck at Columbia, and we look forward to hearing the great things that you're gonna do next year. Thank you.
And is your second?
Uh, the second award winner is a National Merit finalist, and it's based on corporations. So some corporations, if their families work for the corporation, that was Liberty Mutual, then they have a separate entry, and one was awarded that, which we've never had that in the past. So, and Aaron is our first, well, we've had two finalists in the past six years, which is more than we've had.
And the other student's not here to see?
He is not here.
All right. Well, congratulations to all. That's hard work. Real impressive.
Congratulations. That's very impressive.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Gabbard and Ward. I know that you guys have probably talked about this till you're, you're ready to move on, but, uh, as Mr. Gabbard is rolling by, but I, I believe our, our district is very interested in seeing that whole department. Where have we been? We've been talking about things we're gonna do and little pieces of information, and now what does that look like? So basically, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this, but, um, we went out in January, started working on our levy, talking about, you know, the fact that it was historically something that in Ohio we should have fixed as far as the funding model. We haven't. Um, what we haven't shared a lot is that we've been on the ballot 18 times since 1990. 10 out of the 18 issues were approved. I think that's something nice to note. And so I think the story this shares is that Edgewood, as much as I've been out and about in some different arenas, they'll say, why are we in this situation? Actually, the story is we've done very well with the money we've had to deal with up to this point, and it's not because of a person or people, it's the fact that inflation increases and, um, the revenue does not. It's not in the same trajectory. And basically, that's what the second slide says. Typically, a levy will fund us for about four years, and the reason it is is because it takes four years for inflation and the revenue to kind of catch up or, or not catch up, you're gonna see a discrepancy there. Um, so the bottom line is that Edgewood is locally funded, 44% of the budget, state-funded 56% of the budget. That does put a burden on our, our taxpayers. This slide just basically depicts that there is Ohio revised code, if you're really bored tonight, you can look it up right down, that says that we have to be able to certify our budget in the five-year forecast. We have to have enough funds in there to certify it. And Patty's gonna pick up on financial situation that was reported in November 2022, this past November, and where we are today with some real frugal spending.
Yeah, so we reported back in November that our expenditures, we were expected to hit 38 million plus. Uh, revenues at only 37 million. We knew we were looking anywhere from one to three to a 1.6 deficit for this year. That's what we reported on the November forecast. Uh, I'm now getting ready to submit for the May forecast, and you're gonna see here, um, our revenues did come in a little bit higher as well as did our expenditures. Um, but what I really want you to see here, uh, this forecast is only projecting that we are deficit spending by $597,000. Um, when I say we've made some cuts, we, we've made some cuts. Um, these numbers, again, they're a snapshot based on what we see today. Um, we still have a little more than a month before we're going to close out this fiscal year, so these are obviously not final. We know we've got some things hanging in the balance, if you will, to close out the year, but this forecast being submitted will show deficit spending of 597,000, a little more than half of what we thought we were gonna be deficit spending back in November.
And I would just like to say, in a five-year forecast, you should expect salaries to increase, benefits to increase. Often, they don't increase where inflation falls, but organizations should see an increase in that. You don't always know when your, your inflation's gonna fall. As you heard us talk lately, it increased 7% just in the last year. That's, that's more than I can recall in the last five as far as in a given year. And the Rockies Pipeline, if you remember, the board talking about this was funding in our forecast we were expected to receive, and now it's not there. And was it, go ahead and talk about the annual income that we brought, which would take that balance down to zero.
Yeah, so that is $500,000 in itself. Had we have had that revenue this year, um, we would have been very close to even. We're hoping, you know, that that's gonna come through, and we may see that. Um, I can tell you there are other pipelines in the same boat, the Netflix Pipeline filed way before the Rockies Pipeline. That is still in court fighting now. Uh, they did come back and go on to the Supreme Court maybe a couple months ago. They're anticipating a decision in two years on that. Like I said, that was filed, uh, before the Rockies Pipeline filing, so I don't expect anything to happen before two years. Um, you know, it, it could, that's just one of those things we don't know. Right now, all we know is we don't have it, and because of that, that adds $500,000 a year to our deficit spending.
Okay, so another hit to our budget was that during the COVID relief funds that were given from the state to all districts, Edgewood put a majority of that funding into salaries. So when I walked in, I was like, you're kidding me. So you mean to tell me we have 800-plus thousand dollars or 900,000 in salaries? That just means that when the COVID dollars stop, which this was the last year, that is another deficit the district has to pick up that, that was not in there. So we've had some work to do over the last, uh, few months since the time I've entered into the Edgewood Schools. This has been a pretty big task. Prior to the arrival, my arrival in, uh, January, last year, administration eliminated several positions. To date, that's about 16 to 18%, I don't have it in front of me, of administration, uh, 8% of certified and 6% of classified reductions. These are the reductions that have been recommended for next year. And so that takes us to... Oh, sure. I was told to go fast, I'm sorry. Go back again?
Again?
Thumbs up before we're good? It's a lot of positions.
How many of those are from, will be from attrition, Charlie?
Most of those are from attrition.
Okay.
But it's still a hit to some of the elective pieces that they weren't expecting, but most of them are from attrition. I believe, uh, Elisa can correct my math, were three reductions in force, the rest were attrition?
Correct.
Okay. And we anticipated 16 to 17 to be reduction in force. So the sad thing is, is people run when they think there's a problem. And so some of that happened, and some of that was absorbed. That's not always a good thing.
So if you wanna talk about this now, we can, or we can wait till we get to...
We're gonna wait.
Okay. I would like to bring this slide back up.
Okay, we will do that. Mark, no problem.
Actually, I think it's important, if we go back to the COVID slide...
Or I guess we're not waiting. Let's go back to the COVID slide.
I think, I think it's, you know, that says, that says something, but it also doesn't portray what the environment was like. I know somebody's gonna say, why did you use COVID relief monies on personnel?
We had to.
Had to, because the last thing that we thought was fair to the community was to ask for a tax increase...
That's right.
During the COVID pandemic.
That's right.
When a lot of people weren't working. Uh, so, you know, not only were people dealing with, uh, having to stay home because of COVID, possibly losing their job because of COVID, then are, how can we as a human being say, okay, now we want you to give us more taxes? Uh, you're not working, but pay more taxes in the meantime. So, um, that was some of the thought.
It was, it was a non-negotiable. You had to. And I, I'm glad you had me go back, and Mark, you get it turned. It's not fair. Tom gets to talk and you don't, so...
I'm all, I'm all.
But I also, uh, wanna talk about the fact that Edgewood's doing a really good job securing some grants, which is alternative revenue going back into your school district. We are receiving an additional $100,000 to be used for safety, equipment, resources, training for next year. Um, I, did I say 500,000? 100 per building, 100 per building, 500,000 in the district, sorry. And then there's some teachers that have written classroom grants. You heard us talk last month about a PE teacher at the middle school doing a great job, just read another email where a teacher's getting some classroom subscriptions, uh, for a much smaller amount, but those things add up, and it is giving the district...
So the safety grant, I'm sorry...
Yeah, go please.
Why, what are the requirements for spending that money? You have to spend it on...
Well, you had to apply.
Yeah.
And so we've been doing safety audits, where we'll walk around the building, look at different things according to your vulnerability. And so it can be used for anything that the, either that was seen or principals have requested. So I know that we're looking at like GPSs for the bus, we're looking at film for windows. Pam, help me out.
We've looked at, um, camera replacements for areas, and we've done some of that work at the high school quite a bit, as a matter of fact, because theirs came in two sections. They got a fifth, then another...
But I guess it's important that people know that it's for goods...
Yes.
Material things, not people.
Not people, it's for training and resources. Or communication, better communication. Those are the cuts we've had. We, we know that the community spoke, they were not gonna increase taxes, so it's our job to keep working. I wanted to do some perception survey with community and staff, and I have to tell you, we have work to do in Edgewood. I think we should be at 80% or higher in all of these areas. Um, children, the closest is children feel safe at school, parents feel very involved with their children at 90%. They feel comfortable helping their children at home at 83%. Um, but only 63% are not concerned about academics. That's, to me, that's not acceptable. Um, 66 are not concerned about social skills. That's something that, you know, we don't receive additional funds for necessarily, and we're gonna have to find funding for that. Part of our cuts also was finding funding for curriculum adoption. The district will see that we have in our new forecast a $500,000 curriculum adoption in every year for, um, the next five years. I don't understand how we can hit the mark if we don't have the right material. Um, bullying, discipline, we have room for improvement in all of these areas. Communication, room for improvement. Um, 71% of the families feel that their overall experience, they would recommend to a friend. That's better than the 60s, but I'd like to see that at an 80%. The survey results basically said that their favorite courses were art, PE, music, advanced placement, they love, love, love extracurricular. Our lowest percentages were in ROTC and preschool, which surprised me. Um, the following courses have high participation rate, but they, they also did not receive a real high return as far as, I thought it was interesting, the participation rate did not meet the interest rate on the survey. And those were our Butler Tech app, um, courses, design and modeling, and innovators and makers. I just thought that was something to watch. That's interesting. Additional reduction in force moving forward, we're gonna talk about tonight. Um, so far to date, we've cut five administrators, 19 certified teachers, nine classified, those are the percentages I shared. Uh, we've talked about changing routes, that will be a reduction in drivers and buses. So again, we have a little more work to do, and we'll hear some of these discussions tonight. You will see on the agenda tonight, will the board have an appetite to increase school fees to the actual cost to the district, or will it be a, a part of that? Transportation, we had a work session, it became very obvious to me, and I have to tell you, I'm glad being a, a mother, grandmother, we aren't looking at, I don't think, word may change their mind tonight, a reduction all the way down to state minimum, but there's some money we can save in transportation by combining middle school, high school routes. Is it ideal? No, but when you have levies that aren't passing, we have to look at every dollar that we can possibly cut. Um, reduction of staff, there's some room we can do more, the question is, are, do we have the appetite for that or not? Pay to participate, what, will we charge something there? That's gonna be a discussion from the board tonight. Um, so future things to consider at the work session that was brought up, what about the repair? Two of our buildings are the oldest in the district, the primary and the preschool, the early childhood. Some of the things that were discussed was from a 2020 assessment on the early childhood that said these things were in fair to poor condition. Roof, um, lighting, interior doors, it just means it's not decod. Um, gym floor, fire alarm, kitchen hood. And then the sewage system has been a discussion. Some of this may have been already, um, addressed. We'll, we'll hear more about that in our agenda. So if we do go to a two-tiered transportation system, the ti, those will be the times of the day, that's in pencil, not pen. It has come up in some of our survey, why does high school have to start so early? I just wanna say while I'm on record, that's not because we want it to start early. Our buses are decided by our Proviel and Butler Tech routes. So that decides what time we start, and then our routes are created from there. So I know that's not a popular answer, but that's the reality in most districts. It would cost more to have extra buses to pull out of without pulling it into some of your own routes. Our long-term goal, my long-term goal is for the board to, let's wait and see what the Viennium budget tells us, which will be released on July 1st. I think we've cut up a lot of things, and we have a few more things we can certainly cut, but let's see where that falls, and then, but still have a plan of moving forward, what those next cuts will be, but will they need to be tonight? Reevaluate the budget and reevaluate our strategic plan. Our, just the existing strategic plan, is that even what we feel is important today? We've gotta continue to be cautious in our spending, we've got to increase community and student engagement, and really problem solve. It makes me sad when I collect information from people and they don't feel involved. We need to fix that. Negotiate changes to the contract around spending trends. Again, we've got big problems to solve, and I think we need to incorporate more people. That doesn't mean we all agree, but we need to at least be open-minded and, and listen. Um, that's our presentation tonight, which I believe will set the conversation that you're gonna hear the board talk about tonight. Any questions from the board?
So, move back to that one.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Since Tom got a, got an opportunity to speak.
Yes, we don't wanna play favoritism. Is this the one?
Yeah, so I, I know we're gonna talk about some of this stuff tonight, and one of the things that we've talked about is that we were able to cut a business manager, which was John Thomas. And I'll be honest with you, you know, there, there have been some things that have slipped through the cracks since John Thomas has been gone. John, John did a lot around here, and I'm very concerned that it's gonna cost us more money not to replace him than it will if we actually do replace him. And I bring him up as an example because I'm the most familiar with some of the things that, that have slipped through the cracks. But I, I wanna talk about the teachers in particular, and I actually had a conversation with a, a teacher over the past several days, a very senior teacher here who I very much respect, and one of the things that this person said was that there's a concern that we're gonna be operating in a state of chaos next year because of some of the cuts that we've, we've made. So as we have these conversations tonight, you know, I, I know you're very involved in maintenance, for example, and Patty, you're working seven days a week, um, and, and those things aren't sustainable. You know, I heard over the past several days that eighth grade art, for example, is not an elective next year, um, and, and I've heard of other things that have been told that may or not be electives as well. So I, I just, you know, I think this is important to have some really serious conversation about this because I, one of the things that we all said in the very beginning is we wanted to be very sure that we kept these cuts as far away from the classroom as we can, and if we're cutting 19 teachers, I'm not so sure that we're doing that. So I think we need to have some pretty open conversation about that tonight, and we need to really decide, can we afford to make these cuts? Because i- if we're doing it at the expense of these kids and their education, I'm not sure we're making the right calls.
And then balance that out with where you wanna be in the five-year forecast. That's exactly the tough job we have before you. Any other questions, comments from the board? All right, where have you been? Here.
You're good. I think we're gonna be here a while.
Next, we're going to have public participation. Molly Brawater, would you like to start?
Sure.
Just a reminder, please state your name and address, and, uh, we'll be around three minutes.
Thank you. It's Molly Brawater, 4380 Windy Meadows Drive. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. After this month's special board meeting, I left here with lots of concerns. First and foremost, my concerns lie with how we treat our youngest students. In 2021, when our previous superintendent decided to abruptly redistrict our elementary schools, it was dealt with zero public input and apparently very little actual research. Looking through school's finances for the last five years, it appears the redistricting actually has cost the district more money because of an increase in transportation costs. And despite the increased costs and frustrations for family, we haven't seen an increase in student performance. I was extremely set heartwrits to listen to conversations at the last board meeting that we may once again shuffle around our youngest students and once again do so very abruptly. Speaking at one special meeting, calling for a vote a week later is abrupt. Perhaps it's more conversation than the last big change, but it doesn't allow for real conversations or planning. Instead, it leaves a community hurt, parents and staff frustrated, and a big hole in the below village. While cursory numbers show savings, there are a lot more numbers that need to be rated to see if they will actually be realized. But at the same time, what costs will these savings have on the education of our youngest children? Feedback is not big enough to properly house all of those grades, and shutting our youngest grades at the school will impact their experience and education. Specials on carts is not a deal, ideal, and interventions in hallway isn't acceptable. I understand the district and the board have a hard job to do making financial cuts. However, prior to the recent levy, the district did outline potential cuts that could occur should the levy not pass. Those cuts didn't include closing an elementary school, and I think that would have been a different conversation had the voters known that was the new, in Leah Ballpark. I understand older buildings have more maintenance, and we have three buildings that, according to the architecture firms that help schools secure state funding for new schools, some of these schools are part, past their life. Beginning new schools require new money, and the voters spoke that they are tapped out at the moment. But the Ohio revised code does require the school to have a permanent improvement fund for building maintenance. This is a fund that the board constantly reminds us is separate from the general fund, and one we've had no problem going to in recent years to make very expensive repairs for our athletic venues, including around 200,000 to properly prepare tennis court, build a club lane, and 1.5 million for phase one of a new stadium project, which included a size one increase for making the track blue and not the standard clay color. I don't know if this well is dry now, but it seems that like despite knowing we have older schools, they need to be maintained, and we once again put sports instead of education. Edgewood isn't alone in financial struggles, and we aren't the only district discussing moving students around and cost-cutting measures, but how we are handling these decisions is vastly different. Other schools are having actual community town halls to properly discuss these changes and not just special board meetings a week before a vote. Despite this assembling a community engagement team, let's get that place and gather and establish role roles in the district before we do a giant change. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Zeller?
Alexis Zeller, 6800 Blaine Traceford. So in March, after the proposal of the income tax levy, I requested a lot of data from the district so that I could make an educated decision based on data. Um, I was unable to attend the special meeting that was the week before last, so prior to that meeting, I sent an email to the board members with my review of the data and the biggest items I found, um, that were concerning in the way of financials. Then last week, when the special meeting was posted online for review, I set aside time to watch it. To simply put, I was disheartened. I understand that being in a position on the board comes with difficult responsibilities. I understand that no one wants to have to decide what gets cut, who does without, and who will suffer ramifications of those decisions. I understand that some of you sitting on that stage are relatively new to your position and some possibly new to the district, and are attempting to navigate a very difficult situation very early in your tenure. However, some of you have been on those positions since I was a student, which is not recently. And the position the district is currently in reflects your actions over the past decade in some capacity. So I ask you to take the most... So, I ask you to take the moment and try to understand my perspective. I have three small children, all of which will be in an Edgewood school building this fall, although what building that may be seems to be up in the air. In the five short years I've had children attending Edgewood, this is what has occurred. In 2021, we were given four months notice that the elementary grades would be redistrict with the promise of, and I quote, "our previous superintendent, cost savings, specific focus on students' educational needs at each grade level, and that reassigning grade levels to specific buildings enables us to utilize our resources and facilities more efficiently." The data does not show any of those things to be true at this time, but yet in some cases, the exact opposite. More expense to the district and declining student outcomes in K through five. Fast forward to this spring, we announced that we are now having a proposed income tax levy and that if the levy failed, cuts would be made to transportation, sports would be pay-to-play at $900 each. May 2nd, the levy failed. And at the special board meeting on May 10th, one of the first responses from a board member when discussing potential cuts and costs was, "We can't do that much for pay-to-play sports. It will prevent too many students from being able to participate." And in the same breath, no one batted an eye when the same board member was discussing closing down an elementary building, shuffling grades again for the second time in three years, putting specials on carts, interventions in hallways. As a parent of an elementary-aged child, that spoke loud and clear. As long as sports don't suffer, our youngest in the district can make do with whatever we throw together. In early 2021, the five-year forecast showed a deficit beginning this fiscal year. At that same meeting, the board decided to go with the most expensive option to rebuild tennis courts from permanent improvement funds. Within the year following, the board approved $1.5 million for permanent improvement funds for a new football stadium. According to the Ohio revise code, 3% of the district's total revenue can be set aside for permanent improvement funds. That's roughly $1.1 million a year for our district. With five buildings in the district, that's over $200,000 a year per building for upkeep. Buildings are cheap, but responsible planning ahead with those funds isn't an unrealistic idea. So, again, when it's discussed to close down an elementary building to save potentially $400,000 to $600,000 due to potential cost of repairs, instead of utilizing permanent improvement funds, but repairing structures for sports isn't questioned. Again, we hear, as long as sports doesn't suffer, the littlest in the district will make deal. Don't think those in this room didn't notice that Seven Mile Edgewood Early Childhood Center wasn't on the list of busing times you just showed. At the special board meeting, a comment was made by a board member that some individuals have a lot of strong feelings, but they wouldn't like if we came into their home and told them what to cut in their household budget. That's absolutely correct. However, the district doesn't put money into my household budget and I don't provide a promised service to the district in return for those funds. The same board member stated, "If we just wouldn't pass the levy, we wouldn't have to cut anything." I empathize that you have hard decisions to make, but at the end of the day, you wanted this position. You worked to get it and you represent the community and the place you're there. So, instead of getting angry that your community didn't pass a levy, you'd give us a few months to react to, perhaps try understanding our point of view as well. Everyone in this room has had to adjust their budgeting as a result of the economy. It's not the fact that the district has to make cuts that's disheartening. It's the decision-making that is not data-driven, decision-making that is not transparent, decision-making that does not integrate community feedback, and I mean, community feedback and representation from all that would be impacted, that is disheartening. In the five years I've had children in the district, not once have I felt a board member has my elementary-aged children as a priority. So, I'm forever grateful the teachers do.
I just want to make note, the preschool's not on there because we haven't determined the time yet. We're not sure if it's going to be three hours or two and a half and we're still working on that. That was not intentional, other than that.
Carleen Jaeger, please.
I'm Carleen Jaeger, I live at 4351 West Dalton Road. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for putting these two women in their position. Women, I appreciate the job you're about to take on. I appreciate all the work you've done and the little sacrifice that you've made for this district. The vote. People want to blame us for the failure. Only two of the 17 precincts passed the levy. There was no way you can say one side versus the other cared about this district anymore. I told you two years ago that your decision to close Seven Mile, well, I'm sorry, to redistrict the buildings was going to affect any future levies, and it did. There was no organized opposition to this levy. The community as a whole voted against this levy. Now, money saving. I see six buses go past my house morning and night. You cannot tell me that that's economical. Nobody has asked anyone to share with the community the cost of the busing for the past two years versus the cost of the busing previously. Yes, they're going to say gas one up. You can make all the excuses you want. It's not economical to have every route in this district go six times. I appreciate your efforts. I still say I vote for Seven Mile to remain open. I did hear from the Ohio Department of Health, I have records here. Seven Mile's not in any worse shape than some of the other buildings. And in fact, the high school had a leak in a science room that required it to be closed. And there was concern about mold because of the leak. And they handled that. So, let's handle Seven Mile like it should be. Let's handle A-B-E like it should be. And even the middle building needs to be handled like it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. That will wrap up public participation. So, we will move to treasure items. Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Yes, Mr. Gabber, I would like to block items A and B and ask for a motion to approve the board meeting minutes.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular board meeting of April 24th and the special board meeting of May 10th. So, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second? Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Bowers, call roll, please.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the treasures items as presented.
Going to look for a motion to approve the treasure items as presented. Are we doing all, are you helping all lines?
Yes, I can block all three. C, D, E. C, D, E, yeah. Oh, no, just C and D, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, C and D. So, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second? Mr. York. Mrs. Bowers, you call roll, please.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I'll look for a motion to approve the May 2023 update five-year forecast.
We'll be moved, I'm sorry. That's, you're fine. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second to approve the new May forecast? Mrs. Ashcraft. Discussion?
So, this forecast shows that we go into deficit spending in FY '26, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's actually, we go to the bottom line deficit in '26. We're already in deficit spending before '26, right? So, I guess what I'm.
Cash balance.
We go. You're talking about the bottom line, which is the one that has to fit with the state requirement.
Yes.
We've been deficit spending, which is the problem, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Three years prior to this year, we were deficit spending.
So, with this forecast, we're getting ready to talk about cuts here in just a minute. Does this forecast reflect any cuts or anything that we're going to talk about tonight? I guess what I'm trying to, what I really would like to understand before we get to Kelly's part is, is where are we at in terms of going for another levy since this, after this one has failed? That's what I need to try to understand.
The forecast reflects some of the cuts, but not all of them. And the reason being, I've not been told what to cut. So, that has to come from the board.
When you say some of the cuts, what would these?
The March are reflective, but not tonight's regulations.
Okay, so we didn't take action, but we had talked about, you know, do we need to rehire a business manager, which would probably be something we were.
That would have to be done in a setting like this with the board approval in order for that to reflect that.
Okay, so. Okay, so that's something that we'll talk about tonight, but that is already reflect, that savings is already reflected.
Yes.
So, that would be a, right, you'd see more deficit with that regulation.
And those 19 teacher positions that we were talking about, that's reflected in these numbers as well.
If you've already taken action on it, they're reflected in the numbers. If you've not taken action on it, they are not reflected in the numbers.
So, like we've got ROTC and a couple other things on here tonight, that's not reflected?
Correct.
There's no busing work in these numbers?
No.
The other thing that's not on here, correct me here Patty, is we do have a renewal in '25 of an existing tax.
Yes.
And it's not on here as well, right?
Because it hasn't been loaded up correctly.
Yeah, but it is, it is on the books already. People are already paying this tax. It originated in 2005, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, the, you know, there is a little bit of a silver lining in that typically a renewal of an existing property tax has a good chance of passing and affecting this forecast.
Yes.
What year would that be?
2025.
'25, I believe. I think it's back, I remember the last time was 2020. It's a five-year, it's a five-year temporary. Yeah, started in '05, '10, '15, '20, now '25.
And it's not called a renewal because we're not allowed to call it.
What do we call it?
It's a substitute though.
Gotcha.
Instead of.
How do you keep changing the?
I put it in the same category, but you're right. So, you asked a question, when do we put our feedback on the ballot? Did you answer that?
Well, obviously, I would like to see that get on in '25 so that we can start collecting that in '26. If you look down like the line 11.020, that would show you out there in '26 and '27 what that would generate. Down on line 11.020, that would show you what that would generate if that would pass.
But if it didn't, what does that do? Would you need to go see?
It's not, yeah, it's not.
So, we basically have, we've got a year is basically what we're saying. We were right back in the same boat even after the cuts were made.
Yeah, we need to do something. So, Mr. York talked at our last meeting about our cash balance. When I snapped this, and this was just before coming out here right now, our cash, we can go up about 68 days. They recommend you stay at at least 60 days. So, what that means is if we never got another dollar, if nothing else would come in, this district could go 60 days before we would shut down.
And this does not reflect what they're saying about our biennium budget?
No, it doesn't.
You know, as a former superintendent, I used to think the treasurer was playing like tricks because, I know Tom and I have had these conversations, because when the biennium budget, they might say you're going to get this amount and then by the time it's approved, it's less. And then your fall forecast looks a little different from your spring forecast. And it can be confusing. I think that we need to probably have a real critical conversation after the biennium budget is issued. We don't know what that's going to do to this forecast. We may come back in August and we're going to have some real critical conversations or we're going to feel a little bit better. But right now, to make that decision, might be overly cautious. That's just my two cents.
And the other, the other assumption that's made here, I would bet, is that we were guessing that property tax values are being determined at a 20% increase?
Twenty, yeah, 20 to 24.
But there are some districts that I've talked to, other board members, they are working. And I don't think this is a smart thing to do because it's not conservative enough when you don't know the answer. But I think they, a couple of them close by were using a number like 39% increase. That's, I think that's too much because you don't know. So, that's, that's another figure that either could go down or it could go up.
And Summer, I'm doing as long as 18, I mean, you still know.
Yeah.
Is that percentage worked into this forecast?
There is, let me open it real fast and I can tell you what the exact percentage is.
I thought you said it was 20.
I think I have 20, yeah.
You already have that in?
I have a 20 in here. And again, just with me working with other people, I felt like I could build about 20 to 24. What we need to keep in mind, you saw just from a few years ago, you've heard me talk about this, the delinquencies are going up. So, you might get some of those when people get behind. We've also seen in the last few years where foreclosures have fallen from 3% to 9%. So, if people are losing their homes, you just have to take that into consideration too. Even if they come back and say it's 24%, it's not 24% when they go take all their fees out of it that they charge for collecting it. So, that 20% may be a little on the conservative side. That's where I feel like with working with other people, that's where we can land safely and not set ourselves up for unrealistic expectations and not have money come through when we've been banking on it, so.
I think your job is to be conservative, Patty, so it keeps us closer to being out of trouble.
Yes.
In trouble, I guess. So, I think it needs to be conservative because, you know, if it comes in higher, good deal.
So, I've heard you all talk about this budget that's coming out in July. It sounds like you guys are fairly, y'all are fairly confident that it's going to be maybe more than we thought it was going to be. I think the other thing that's out there and we've talked all around it is that increase in property values. And I actually went to that, I went to Nancy Nixon's page over the last weekend and I just read through some of those things. And basically, my takeaway on that was is that they won't even start making these assessments on property values until the end of the year. So, I'm assuming if that's how that works, that we probably won't see the increase in property taxes until next year. So, if that is in fact the case, will the budget in July of 2024, would that show the increased revenue based off of higher property values?
If we have it, we can build it in. Obviously, you're only required to file a forecast in November and then you update in May. But we're keeping a very close eye on this as we build things up.
But you'll have those numbers. So, if they're here in November, December of 2024, you'll have, excuse me, '23, you'll have that for that July forecast.
Yes, yeah.
When, where are real estate taxes paid in the district?
We get them in February and August.
But, but there's 20% already built into this forecast we're looking at.
Because we know we're getting something, like I said, I'm banking on 20%.
If it goes up to 24, 25, 30, I mean, we're just dealing with it. Less than 10% would be my guess. Meaning, they said 24% bother counting.
Then I was in a meeting where they're saying with House Go 920 and the rollback, you don't know if county will get that or how much more the state will get of that. So, there's a lot of what ifs. That's why I'm saying we need to sit back and wait a little bit.
But you already said that they're not going to reassess until the calendar year, which would be by December.
By December, yeah. And then we'll get everybody done.
So, we're, we'll know in six weeks, five weeks, we're going to basically know what we have for next school year. And then we're going to make it till next July and we should have a pretty good idea of what the raises in property values have done for us. And I've read that the majority of that money will go to the schools. So, that, I mean, that's what it says.
We hope you're right.
Well, I know, but Nancy, Nancy was in a meeting with me. She said the state could end up taking some of that, so.
But yeah, it's, you know, it's on the internet and it's on her webpage. I'm assuming that's true. But so, so if that's the case, then I guess we're saying or November of '25 would be when the levy would go back on the ballot if it's needed.
That would be for you to tell us.
When would you recommend that, May or?
Well, we need a hundred, we need a hundred days to get everything filed. And then it takes some time to get the resolutions and everything together. So, you need to back up 100 days from that election date. And then obviously, we would need some time to get things pulled together to get it filed.
I mean, a number of election stuff, though, I mean, if it don't pass, how do you make cuts or do anything in the middle of the school year?
Agreed.
I think, I think if anything, you'd go for a May election.
I think, I think if anything, you'd go for a May election and then you start making plans now for what happens if it doesn't pass in May. And you go ahead and you're prepared, so that way there is a plan. I mean, me and Ms. Broadwater don't agree on a lot, but like she said, when she got up there, we need to have a plan. And if we're gonna close down a building, we need to start working at it right now and what we're gonna do to execute that plan, so we're prepared and ready.
Well, would you not agree Patty that whatever cuts we make, they get more? We can't, we're not gonna make cuts tonight, I, I'm, you know.
There's some on there for you to look at.
Okay, but some of the major things that we've looked at, we're gonna wait until July to see what the numbers say, right? So, um, if there is an election in November and we, we did that, we did have a levy and passed, that gives us time to know. Um, because if it's a property tax in November, it would be collected in January of twenty-four?
Yes, they collect that very next year. No, the property is different. It could go that very next year. It's the foreign income tax, it's gonna take eighteen months.
Yeah, we're talking about putting it on next year, right?
Oh, next November?
No, we were just talking, no, I was, we were just talking about November.
I mean, you're talking about November this year?
Yeah.
Well, I was talking about May, but he was bringing up if you did it in November, then that gives you the time to go ahead and if it doesn't pass, to start planning for the next, the next year. But we also have to show a need, and I'm not sure.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you, without a plan, I'm not voting for these cuts.
Neither.
There's a couple in my camp, and I'm not gonna sit here and cut staff and do all this other stuff, and I'm not voting for anything to make any cuts right now.
Are we good, are we done discussing the May mortgage? Alright, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five zero. My next item is a new fund. It's a school safety grant.
Looking for a motion to approve the school safety grant for FY twenty-three. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second? Second.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pressler?
Deal to the young guy.
Alright. And Mrs., we need discussion, what are we gonna use this money for?
This is a safety grant we were just discussing, isn't it, Patty?
Is this for the kids?
Um, yeah, this is gonna be to kind of replace some of the materials in each classroom, so they have safety bags, materials they would need in case of lockdown and emergency where they had to evacuate. It also, because each grant has to be written specific for a purpose, it's also gonna help to provide, um, training and training materials to staff so that we can make sure everybody is very comfortable and confident with what they would do in case of an emergency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the, one of the material items could be, uh, and, uh, the, the team needs to figure this out. Curtis is real familiar with this. I don't know if Curtis is here.
So is Alicia.
Yeah.
She's been working on this.
So, okay, so there, there's a, a three M film that can be put on, uh, exterior doors and windows that actually will, will stop a bullet from necessarily penetrating and shattering the glass, which, which is important. It might give us five to ten minutes more time to react because we do have people, uh, first responders and such that can get here quickly. Because the shooter in Nashville shot her way through an exterior door, glass, uh, building area, so it would, it would give us some additional uh, time to respond to somebody that tried to enter the building like that.
Alicia's doing a presentation next month on all the things they've been doing around safety, so I'm sure she might have some information on that.
Good deal. Sorry to jump to.
You would think we were coordinating this or something.
I did not. I mean, is the three M in the talks of what we're using this money for?
Not this particular small grant.
But for the five hundred thousand?
For the five hundred thousand, we can, uh, re-propose that.
I think it's a necessity at this point. Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft with Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. My next item, um, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the transfer from the athletic fund to the Coomer Field renovation. This is the first of five.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the transfer from the athletic fund for the field renovation project. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Discussion?
How much is this donation?
It is ten thousand dollars.
And where did that money come from out of the account? How did they raise that?
Um, athletics has raised it, um, I believe through ticket sales and things like that. Um, it's an agreement that Mr. Thomas worked out with, uh, Mr. Cox, uh, for.
No tax money in this, I guess, is what I'm looking for.
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
That's it, that's all I need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Um, next I would like to block items H and I. It's for two donations. One is three hundred dollars, uh, from the youth girls, oh, three thousand dollars from the youth girls' basketball to high school girls' basketball. And then a furniture donation for our preschool classroom.
Looking for a motion for the two donations. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second? Second. Mr. York? Patty, you and I had a little discussion about this prior to this meeting starting. And I still don't really understand why you are taking care of girls' select basketball funds. So I would like to see that taken off of your plate, um, the sooner the better.
Yes, sir.
Which means I'll go back to the organization?
Yes. That is not school funds. That's not to be used by the school, and I'm disappointed that it's been put there on you. But with that being said, Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
My motion carries five zero.
Well, the other donation, would you say what it was?
Oh, preschool classroom furniture?
Yes, thank you for that. Indian Hill donated that. Alicia goes to some quarterly maintenance meetings and they knew we were opening another unit. And rather than spend Edwood dollars, we have some nice furniture that was donated. So thank you for you and your family for picking that up and bringing it. Another alternative revenue, right?
Now, the next item is a motion to approve Butler County Head Start lease.
Looking for a motion for the lease with Butler County Head Start.
Yes, still moving aside.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mr. Messerschmidt, second. Any discussion? Isn't this contingent on what we do with Seven Mile?
We still have a contract, but we, we still would put them somewhere.
If we have room?
We have room. I mean, if you can table if you want to, we have room. We have room with the high school, um, that we're looking at. There's also room at the middle school and EIS, but the high school was the one that, uh, we're mostly looking at. That has direct access from the park to the classroom. But we can table that.
I think we, I think it's desperately needed and we'd, we'd be wasting time if we don't.
It's our students.
Yeah. Those kids, those kids need, uh, need, uh, Head Start as bad as seniors need elective. I think it's important that these kids get into the school as quickly as we can get them.
I agree. Pretty much know where I'm at on the second part of this discussion. I just wanna make sure we don't want to put the cart on the horse. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
My motion carries five zero. Next I would like, uh, to ask for a motion to approve Johnson Controls Maintenance.
Looking for a motion to approve the Johnson Control Maintenance Agreement that is thirty-two pages long. So, Mr. Pressler, do I have a second? Second. Mr. Messerschmidt?
It's thirty-two pages. I'm not reading that.
This is for like DMS and support and stuff?
Boilers, chiller.
Boilers and chillers.
It doesn't start till August first. Can we table it and let us read it? Or do you need it twice? I mean, it doesn't start till August first.
I think it was recommended by, uh, RHAC, uh, XO, and he's not, uh.
That's fine, but I'm not, I'm not a good subject. Table it, if you're not ready. Not, I don't, I mean, it was just put on here.
We can do that.
Okay. I, I don't feel comfortable. So we have a motion to have it tabled? Is that what we're hearing?
Yes.
Just table it.
You don't need a motion?
Okay, tell them.
There you go.
I don't, we'll table it.
Okay.
It's fine.
Uh, my next item is motion to approve an MOU with the Butler County Educational Service Center, uh, for audiology services.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the MOU with Butler County Education, Butler County Educational Services.
Okay, I don't have an MOU.
There's nothing on ours.
I don't, I'm not.
We don't see anything.
Either because there's no, I don't know what we're, is it listed twice, L and M? Because I see.
Hold on, well, we have a contract and an MOU.
I can see the contract. So the M is for?
The contract is marked contract.
Contract, yeah. M is for visually compared, and the other is for audiology, right? So these, this is to serve kids with IEPs.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So it's like a, it's a rego then? Yeah, it's a physical rego.
When, when do we have to, can we table this too? Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and table the MOU. I, I mean, I don't, I don't see anything online. Do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, we're gonna table that also. K and L, move.
Uh, next item M, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the Butler County Educational Service Center contract.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract between Edwood and Butler County Educational Services.
Warren County.
So, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second? Ashcraft? We need discussion?
This is what we have for, right?
Yeah.
And do we all accuse this amount?
Yes.
It's neither, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, this one is, um, very comparable to what we've done in the past. Now, the next one's gonna be a little.
Mrs. Bowers?
Should be a little less because of all the coaches that were tagged, that's how it bothered.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Uh, Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yep.
Motion carries five zero. Next I would like to ask for a motion to approve Warren County Educational Service Center contract.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the Warren County Educational Service Contract. Bless you. So, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler, discussion?
Why does this one sometimes, did we, did we switch?
These are for IEP-driven.
These are social communication classrooms. Um, the most media students in the district are actually, um, educated outside. They cannot be served here in our.
We switched to Warren County last year, right?
We actually use both.
It just depends on who offers what and what the best placement is for IEPs.
So Butler County does not offer services here?
To this security.
I know this is putting you on the spot, but do you know how much more this is than last year's?
I can try.
Cause I know one of the years it increased by two hundred thousand dollars a year, and I remember we pissed a fit over that.
This is, this is, this is pretty high.
Well, so, wait, are these just for Warren County and Alterca School?
I can clarify a little bit, if you need to. Um, this is all of our physical therapy for the district as well. So for every student that's housed here and out of district, um, this includes an interpreter for a student who only communicates using sign language. We have two of those. Last year we downed one this year, so there's a decrease there. Um, the rest of those are for students who are placed out of district. There are four students being serviced out of district on this contract, two of which have to have one-on-one aids with them, which is a surprise. It's comparable to what it was last year.
So, Lindsay, that's unfair, I guess, but to put you on the spot, but with, two of, two of the portions of this are social communications. Is that sign language?
No, that's for students typically on autism sector misorder.
Where, where would, the interpreters would be the area that definitely?
And the interpreters are housed here. They come with students to the district.
The purchase order last year was seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand one twenty-three. This one is six forty-six, so we're about a hundred thousand dollars less this year.
Which is probably the loss of one student.
I think that's the loss of an interpreter. Um, students, we have about the same. We have one graduate, but we have one that's returning from a residential placement who's gonna be coming back. That is, you know, kind of taking its spot.
Do we have them that they're shaped with cell phone rates?
Do they have any competition, Lindsay, is?
They really don't, no. And that's, that's partly why we, um, sometimes we fight for these placements for students. Um, and there are times where we need placements for students who are struggling in-house that we have to put on home instruction or other things because they're hard spots.
They offer services that we don't have in this county.
So, so what do we do when we can't find a place for these students?
We make some home instruction. We, we work with the team to figure out what the best alternative is while we work for our students.
Do, do we have, is, is there another option? Is there, I know, I know we're asking if there's. We're asking, I know we've asked the question, is there somebody else that provides these services? But do we, do we have other options for this? This is pretty substantial.
There are in town, in county. Um, we utilize some other options already depending on student ages, immediate school, um, applied behavioral services. St. Allois, it just depends on student's age. Some placements cost a little less, some cost a little more. The students you're seeing on that document are students of the most severe needs.
So, so are we buying the seats? Is that what we're doing?
We only pay a student a ten cent, so it's not seats anymore. We used to pay receipts whether kissed or not.
Okay.
These are students that, um, with safety concerns, inability, they have a high level of care. Um, oftentimes have additional support if they need homes.
Okay. I, I'd like, I'd like to talk about this sometime, uh, cause I, you know, you look at physical therapy, for example. That's a lot of money. If you divide that by the rate, which is eighty-three dollars per hour?
No, it's eight, yes, eighty-three hour.
Okay. I wonder if, you know, it's kinda like paying, paying a bill or to build your house, they charge thirty percent more. And when if you decided to go get the subcontractors yourself, you saved, you pay seventy percent of the hundred percent that you would have paid. I'm wondering, I know it's a big job.
But you're using their facilities, so you kind of are.
So they're, so they're going, they're going there?
PT or not, PT they come in-house, they serve us our students.
I thought you were paying for PT for the students going out for that rate.
That is, that's inclusive of that, so our PTs travel to services.
So we're probably came from the travel here, right?
Uh, sounds similar. Then is the only related service we contract, we have speech and occupational therapy in-house.
Do we have to approve this tonight? Is there? No, we don't have to approve this tonight. I mean, is there, is there some things we can look into on that? I mean, that's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And that's, that's, if it's eighty-three dollars an hour, that's twenty-six, two thousand, six hundred and sixty-four hours.
Eight days a week.
They're eight, eight days a week?
Eight days a week?
What day? That's a song, isn't it?
For her time, though.
See, one day, he wasn't.
We could look into hiring our own. I thought that was for students receiving PT at that facility. We can look into hiring our own PT, which was. Well, and the bottom three, the daily rates, like those are. I think those are average for what, you know, like St. Alloysia or anything like that.
I will say the, the physical therapist rate last year was seventy-six an hour, so it is a substantial.
They got rates.
We're seeing that across the board with some of our services, increases. I'm happy to look into that. I will say, none of these, we could table this and look at this this summer. These are placements that would not start until August.
I think buying some of this. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna also table this.
This quote is good till end of June, so.
Right.
Just hope they don't, since they'll have any competition.
It only makes sense if we can hire our own person and have a savings of over a hundred thousand dollars. It just makes sense to have one, since they're coming here anyway.
Do you get a breakdown rate of their bill? How much are they charging just to travel here? Do you know?
I have some travel costs that we're talking about.
I just wanted to.
I mean.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
We're starting.
Let's move on to.
Okay.
Next item.
My next item, I'd like to ask for a motion to increase the adult lunch price at the buildings from three dollars and sixty cents to four dollars and five cents.
Looking for a motion to increase the adult lunch prices. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second? Mr. Pressler, discussion? Mrs. Dowd, you call roll, please.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item is just the annual workers' compensation, the group record spec. That's a program we participate in every year. We just get rebates on what we're paying into workers' comp, not a vote or anything. I just wanted to share it with you.
So it's twenty-two thousand dollar refund, is that?
Roughly, yes. I just have to attend ten millions a year.
Cold bologna sandwiches too, right?
They, no, they don't give you any lunches. It's worth it.
You're lucky. They scheduled ours during the day, as he.
The only other informational item I have, I just want to give a shout out to our staff, because they, they really go above and beyond. And I sit back and I look at these things for safety grants. I actually had someone walk down with a check today. Again, we approved that last month for one of our PE teachers that wrote a grant on his own to get monies, and that check actually came in today. While those are specific and have to be used for certain things, everything we can get grants for, it just allows us to use our general fund for other things. And we just have a lot of staff members in this district that have really stepped up here, and I just want to say kudos to our staff.
Thank you. All right, moving along.
Okay.
Mrs. Spigot, would you like to start?
Yes, for the sake of time, I'm going to recommend that we block items six A and B. They're both field trips. Three are for overnight field trips for camps, and the second is for a transitional program within the school day, as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the two field trips. So Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Mrs. Dowd, you call roll, please.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item, I'm looking for a motion to approve the policies. We have over twenty policies that either been revised or new. And it's for our second semester revisions, but looking for a motion to approve. This is a second reading for the policies as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the policies that is the second read on these policies.
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York? Mrs. Dowd, you call roll, please.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero.
Next item is just an updated agreement with premier, basically talking about marketing rights, and we do this every so often. That's right, you're looking at me, okay. And basically, I'm looking for an approval for marketing rights and service agreement as presented. They help, actually, right here is one of them, I believe.
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second to approve the, the rights and service agreement?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, discussion? How many years' contract is this?
Well, basically, we, we said we would do it in three, and then revisit it, and they pay our funds about twenty thousand a year, I believe, for marketing.
And I'm very aware that the big money for this is, is over.
Oh, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
John did a really good job before I left, reaching out to several different organizations, and they even reiterated the fact that that is the going rate these days. About as good as it's gonna get to build.
Twenty thousand.
And it gives them first rights.
A year?
This is more.
That's just for money. That's not, that's not what they pay for rental of the offices.
They pay for our trainer. That's part of the deal.
So you shouldn't see anything different in this contract than the past contracts.
Mrs. Dowd, would you call roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft? Yes. Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next few items I'm going to just not block and talk about them in singletons. Our calendar changes. You're gonna notice item six E, and this is noting three additional professional development dates for our staff. But because this calendar was already approved, we need to take it through the board again, just to be more transparent. So it's no additional student days, no additional staff days, but it does have three additional professional development days. I take it back. We did see a little error in the calendar. You're gonna notice on May twenty-fourth, it actually is the last student day and staff day, because there was one less day than what was needed as per contract. And then three additional professional development days, and these are basically to cover all the unfunded mandates and, and through curriculum options. It saves the district some money in paying teachers to stay after or bring them in throughout the summer. So it is a way to cost save for the district on necessary professional development. Do the teachers have all that?
I'm looking for a motion to approve the calendar changes for the professional development. Mrs. Ashcraft, Mr. Pressler, a second. Discussion?
Do the teachers have to do this? I, well, with the exception of the student day being the last day with teachers, I did bring this to Sandy's attention, said didn't require a vote, because it's not changing their days.
It's not changing the number of days to work. It's just changing where the, how the students.
Is there a problem, though, the last student days with the, we could table this with everything else?
Well, it's the, previously, the last teacher day was gonna be May twenty-fourth, and this retains that last teacher day being May twenty-fourth.
Well, Pam was sharing that you've done that before, where the last teacher day is the last student day. Is that, have you done that before? Pardon me?
Always.
So it's always, so that isn't a change of practice?
Some, some years of quality, some years.
Would you like this to go to a union vote?
I don't think it needs to, because like our start day is the same, our finish day is the same.
They're all saying no. The people in the blue shirts are saying no. If you do, we'll bring it back. But I'm looking for a change in calendar received from the board, so there should be a problem. It's adding professional development days, which are needed, and it's also having the last day for teachers be the same day as students, which I've not heard of before, but evidently we do that.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Dowd, you call roll, please.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, next item is item six F. This is about fees, so I would ask you to click onto your link. You will see three columns of fees for each grade level and by subjects as they get into high school. You're gonna see the current cost, meaning what was charged this year to families, a proposed cost, which is what we could do as a, it increases it slightly, but not a whole lot, or the actual cost. For instance, let me give you some examples for those that are not seeing this, and Molly, by the way, next month, we should be able to.
Thank you.
Display this for everybody. But anyway, the actual cost for preschool is seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents, and we've only been charging thirty dollars. The actual cost for first grade, I'm not going through all these, don't hold your breath, is almost a hundred and thirty-eight, and we've only been charging fifty. So the discussion tonight, I'm looking for a motion to whatever you would feel, do we take them all the way up to the actual cost, or we go to the proposed cost, which is somewhere in the middle?
So you want to.
I'm gonna spot.
I would like you a discussion, yeah, a motion and a discussion.
I need a motion, I need a motion.
So move.
Mr. York, do I have a second? Mr. Pressler, discussion?
So the proposed cost, where did, how did you arrive at that?
It's just, it basically almost like a halfway point, Pam. Is that what you and Scott did?
Well, actually, when we calculated it out, what we did is, in the actual cost, there are some things that are niceties that cost us for students. So like, we could go back to handwritten workbooks, but we pay to have gradebook and have parents be able to access that all the time. So for proposed costs, we tried to leave some of those types of items off there and have it be more of the actual hands-on tangible materials in that proposed cost line. And the electronic programs for supporting the actual, like Success Maker or those adaptive programs that we get for them to be able to either increase in challenges or working on math or like DARs or kind of fill up, you know, fill the gaps and work on some of the skills.
So Pam, do you know what's the participation in some of those electronic? Is it one hundred percent? Everybody? How many people, are all kids taking advantage of those electronic?
The lower grade levels, they do, yes.
Okay, so don't we think that's important if they're all taken, right?
And actually, we already did a modded on that, Marion will pull data on everything, and Scott had prefer, and they removed some of the programs that did not have I usage. So those things have already been taken out, or those numbers would have been higher.
When you look at the total cost of all these digital softwares that Marion helps manage and, and put out to the teachers, we saved about thirty or forty thousand dollars. So when we, we, we just decided that, you know, the usage wasn't high enough and it, and it didn't show enough increase or enhance our achievement, so we took them out. When we did the math, it shakes out a little bit less actually in here, even though I know it looks like the cost are higher. One other thing that we, that I have never included in the fees, in an effort to not raise the fees, is, for example, we, we bought math workbooks. We're going on our fourth year. We bought those three years ago. We never really include, like, we, we just like rob Peter to pay Paul, and whatever wasn't covered in fees came out of the curriculum budget. We, again, have ran into the same thing, where now we are implementing the new, the Amplify Reading, and I'll refer to the blue shirts again, at least the ones in grade five and below. They are dying for the workbooks. I do believe that this is one thing that will make a direct impact on student achievement as we buy that program. In the past, we would have just tried to figure this out or not get the workbooks. In this instance, we're including them in the fees so that we can show, here's what this stuff really costs in C A.
And looking at our results, we need all the tools we can get.
Did we already move to approve that?
You approved the, the curriculum. We did, the workbooks are something that are tangible, and that's something that they want students to have, but it was not included in the adoption.
I have a quote for those that, the, the cost of those are basically, for six years, that's how they do this, you're, you're gonna pay, let's just do this. Thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year. I, I can't remember. It's not right in front of me, but over the course of six years, you pay for it upfront, and then you recoup your money through student fees over time. I will say that a lot of times, we, I had a discussion with our middle school math teacher today, and we're gonna have a deeper discussion about, do we need to repurchase the math books in three years from now when it expires? We don't know if we're maximizing the usage or not. In this instance, we feel like it's paramount to pair these workbooks with the Amplify Reading curriculum that we're bought.
So basically, you're gonna see tangibles on here. I guess the question is, are we gonna take it up to the max and charge people full force or part of it?
All right, are we gonna, my, my question is, what does the proposed fees generate? Do you know, I'm sorry, that's fine, you're fine. I'm just, I was just wanting to know.
We were calculating, it would be about an additional one hundred thousand minus those that are.
Okay, what does the actual cost generate?
Two, two hundred or whatever.
We just calculate it to be about a hundred thousand or.
For the proposed, not the actual?
Correct.
What's the actual going to?
It would have been two hundred.
Would be closer to two hundred than one hundred? Okay, so the way this is put in here, we need to, I need to separate the two. Would you like to vote on the actual first, or would you like to vote on the proposed first? Actual. All right, I'm gonna look for a motion.
Go ahead. We could talk after we've the motion, right?
Yeah, for the actual cost of raising of the school fees for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So move. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler?
So are the kids getting something for that?
You'll see exactly what they're getting. So look at each grade level. You'll see, well, where it says instructional materials, let's go to a grade, like, let's go to first grade. Math workbook, ELA workbook, instructional materials is more for like their extra paper, their supplements they need for their core curriculum. You can see exactly what each item is being charged.
Yeah, and they're actually going to have something in their hand.
Well, the software is not. You can make a copy of it, yes.
Yeah.
You know, we're talking, I mean, we're talking about cuts, nobody wants to talk about, but, I mean, we're talking about cutting staff. We're not gonna charge the actual cost for these kids to, to go to school. Something, we gotta give somewhere, and we can't go up here and vote them all down.
Well, you can. You can, but we'll be back in the same.
Any more discussion before we vote on the actual?
Well, let me ask a question. So Tom's asking if they're gonna have anything in their hand. If they're not getting anything additional, because no matter if we vote the, that are not, they're still, they're getting the same thing, right?
They're paying for what they're getting.
They're still being paid for what.
Yeah.
Versus that.
The person does pay.
So it's not like we're gonna keep stuff from them if we don't.
My question has to do with.
Well, we wouldn't have to do the free workbooks.
Anytime you pay, anytime you're charging a child for something, you gotta, they gotta get something in return.
Yes.
That's the law. We can't just put a fee in here and they don't get something back.
That's why you're gonna see in that proposed, when we went back, we took away some of that, and like, workbooks are so easy to be tangible. And structural materials, my point was, put just every fourth grade or every eighth grade at the very same thing. And, and that's where we have to shore things up. And, and, um, that's where we have to sure things up, and you'll see where the current cost there was a charge, but the proposed cost changed over time. Now, can I pick for a plan of my kid's fees?
All the requests come through Pam or I or both of us also, so we would make sure that nothing falls through the cracks that doesn't go to every kid. We would send that back to the team and say, hey, this is not something that's allowable for student fees. So, the way it works is, it, it'll filter through us before it would actually goes to patent for approval and purchase orders and all that.
More open POs. I'm kidding.
Trying to go the opposite.
So any more discussion on the actual cost? I mean, there's a very big difference from what we're charging right now from what the actual cost is.
We're eating a lot of this cost.
No?
We eat.
I mean, a lot of it's over a hundred dollars per grade, per kid.
Right, okay, who, who has to pay this fee?
Parents.
I know, but does every child have to pay this fee?
If you're on a free lunch, you're gonna get this waived. If I apply, yes.
So free lunches?
Because they have a government ID number, you have to have a government ID number to be waived.
That's what I'm asking.
What does it do for reduced students? They have to pay a little bit. Do we know any differences in what, like, the, cause we say three hundred is reduced forty percent, but do we know the actual number of three hundred is reduced?
I do. I can try to pull it for you.
I mean, if it's, I just.
We have technical issues here, we don't know.
Don't worry about that. It's just a lot.
We ready to vote? Mrs. Bowers, you call, roll, please.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
No.
Mr. York?
No.
It's point zero.
Okay, next item, another fun conversation, reduction in transportation service. So we've talked about two options over time. We've talked about moving to a state minimum busing service that would not pick up high school, and we pick up students two miles from the building. We also know that we don't have neighborhoods necessarily to support that. And so we've come up with an option two, to talk about, we pick up within a half mile, K-12, put more students on a bus, that would save about two hundred thousand, and, um, it also puts about four buses out of service, so that's where your savings comes in.
I'm gonna look for a motion for a reduction in transportation services.
So move.
Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? We got two options here again.
I'll go for the two-tier, but, I mean, right now, there's no way I'll do it.
All right, so I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look for a motion for option number one to go to state minimum bussing. I wanna vote on it first.
So move.
Any, any discussion? Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
We just gotta vote on it.
We're gonna vote on option number one.
We're gonna vote on. Well, no, but they're expressing an option, it's kind of on the speed.
Don't we have to discuss it?
I got a, I got a motion for Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
So you already have a motion.
Mr. York?
I already have a motion.
Discussion, discussion. Option one, you guys ready to vote?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bowers, you call, roll, please.
Mr. Pressler?
No.
Mr. York?
No.
Mr. Gabber?
No.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
No.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
No.
Option number two. I need a motion for option number two on redu, reduction of transportation. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Say.
Mr. York, discussion?
Why do the times of the schools have to change? Um, basically, the times, the only two that have changed, well, three changed, I believe. High school changed because, um, of Butler Tech, and I don't know why we're picking Butler Tech up at the middle school this year, right? So it really was a flip-flop of high school and middle school, and I was told because of the Butler Tech bu, buses. But to me, I don't understand why they're not picking up at the middle school. So anyway, it's either one of them has to go at the earlier time. And then the EIS has been having a transportation issue, where parents are communicated at least three days a week that there's a late bus, we needed to find about five minutes so that that is eliminated. We do know we need to change preschool times as well, or, or adjust what buses are serving preschool, because there seems to be some, um, conflict there of pickup. So it's basically provide better service, but the earliest is because of Butler Tech. Well, wasn't there a paper that gave us the start times? Cause I can't find it now. Well, you would see it in your PowerPoint, you would see it in the PowerPoint presentation. If you're not voting on the bus times, that, like I said in the presentation tonight, that's a pencil. Once Shay knows how to develop the routes, he'll come back and, and sure those times up and put it in. Well, I mean, we're gonna have to be voting on handbooks before too long, so we're gonna need to know start times, and I think we've been, high school. He loves to know start times, but we've kinda put them at all. Well, we've kinda put them at all because of discussion. Yeah, one of them has to start the earliest time because of Butler Tech. Is that the middle school, is it the high school, it doesn't matter. Well, I mean, I, we do always have the middle school, why are we flip-flopping it now? I mean, middle school teachers, I guess. I believe it had to do with the two-tiered system, but I, I can't answer that, I can have Shay's reason.
Don't we vote on bus routes?
You're not voting on times, you're voting on two-tier, then once she knows the direction, he'll come in and sure that up. Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm afraid for me. That's why, I mean, I'm afraid. Yeah.
Option number two, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowers, you call, roll, please.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
That motion carries slide zero.
Okay, next item is discussion, a motion of discussion of how we are going to address operating expenses when, um, basically things come up. It says, discussion on building operation expenses as presented. We talked about last time work session, what we were gonna do with Seven Mile, excuse me, early childhood center. Is there a discussion you wanna have tonight on that?
So move. I'm gonna look for a motion for building operations expense. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, discussion?
So it doesn't sound like we're considering closing Seven Mile at least for next year, that's correct, right?
That's nothing that the superintendent recommended, but the board has the right to have that discussion.
Okay, so, here's, here's my comments on this, and this, this goes back, you know, a long, long time. Yeah, I had a daughter in Seven Mile when the redistricting went down, and that actually was what kinda got my attention and one of the reasons why I'm sitting up here tonight. And, you know, we heard from public participation tonight, that, you know, obviously that was not well-received by a lot of folks, you know, over on the west side of the district, myself being one of those. Here's, here's my opinion on this, and, you know, if you look at the seven of us that are sitting up here on the stage, um, four of us have only been sitting up here for a little over a year, so there's been a lot of new faces on, on this board, and, and there still seems to be, you know, a lot of animosity from the, you know, from that side of the district towards the board, towards the district, and we really need to work to get past that. So I think Kelly, with what you're doing with community forums and community outreach, you know, we, we need to try to work and get past some of that, and we need to try to build a sense of community once, once again. I also think, though, that we need engagement with the community, because the, the reality of it is, is it sounds like we're gonna be right back in the same situation a year from now, where there's gonna be a levy on the ballot. And, I mean, a lot of what that levy is gonna be is, do we keep Seven Mile open or not? I mean, we're gonna start running out of low-hanging fruit to pick, we're gonna start taking branches out of trees, and, and that's kinda where we're getting, and the next time it gets proposed, it's probably gonna be a levy that says, this is gonna be one of the proposed cuts if this, this levy fails. So, I don't really wanna see Seven Mile closed, I, I think it's a big part of that community, it's a historic school, there's a lot of ties there, there's a lot of memories there. Actually, four of us sitting on this stage right now, that are all elected to be sitting here, we live in and around that area out in township, and the one that doesn't live out there is Pressler, he probably won't work this hard as anybody trying to see this, this levy get passed, so, nobody up here has an appetite for closing Seven Mile. But we are starting to run out of options, and I think everybody needs to understand that, that's where we're, that's where we're at, and that's where we're, we're headed. So, if we're not going to close Seven Mile, my recommendation is, I think we need to have some serious conversation about what we're, how we're gonna use Baybeck and Seven Mile. In the year and a half that I've been on this board, sitting on this stage, there has been two school bus accidents on Seventy-three. It was the same bus, and a lot of, and a lot of the same kids was, was on that bus, and thank God, our bus driver did a phenomenal job both times, and we had really good reaction by the administration, and everybody was involved, and it was no worse than what it was. But, I did see the video, and these were middle school kids, and they got, they got swung around inside that bus. Um, if those would've been five-year-olds, if those would've been four-year-olds, we'd have probably had a lot of kids that were hurt. And I've said it before, and I mean it, and this is one of the reasons why, you know, I felt as strong as I did about not going to state minimum bussing, is because the most dangerous thing that these kids do on any given day is make their trip to and from school. I saw your note, Kelly, about the kids, you know, on the bicycles and safety in the community, and, you know, it's, it's a very important thing, and, and we need to make sure we get our kids to and from school safely, and I think, you know, keeping the littlest kids at home is, is very important, in my opinion. I think unnecessarily transporting these kids from Trenton to Seven Mile, from Seven Mile to Trenton, at the age of four, five, six, and seven, I think we assume some risk from that. So I, I would really like to challenge the board, um, administration to, to have some serious conversation about how we're gonna use those buildings. And that might be a first step in rebuilding trust and working through some of the animosities from the western side of the district, so that we do put this levy back on the ballot in the fall, that we get some more support. I will say this, you know, we, we're talking now, we almost had to make a call up here whether we're gonna keep that building or open or not, and Ms. Jaeger, you brought up that there was only two precincts in the whole district where the, the levy passed. I actually have it right here, I'm counting four, but none of them were in the townships. So if we want levies to pass, we're gonna have to have support from the, from the townships, from the villages of Seven Mile, and I just think if we're gonna have this conversation, we need to really figure out what we wanna do with that building, cause it, I, I don't know that it's doing everything that it was supposed to do, so I would just ask that we consider, consider that. I agree, to an extent, except for that, you know, I think we need to create some sort of plan, we can't wait, and then we, you know, act off of just reactions, relations or whatever, but I can't continue to support cutting students, you know, taking a building or putting a building above students, teachers, or staff. Uh, that's why I deny, I won't be voting for any cuts until there is a plan. We have an entire, an, an entire district to look out for, and, uh, we have to do what's right for this district. It's easy to sit out there and say, you know, I got people constantly wanna put out recommendations, and it's so easy to say, cut this, cut that, cause it doesn't affect me. But when you're the one up here carrying the weight of the district on your shoulders, it's a lot harder. So, you know, that's, I think that we need to come together, and we need to start working now for what's gonna happen if the levy doesn't pass, so next time we decide to put it on the ballot, and definitely have a plan moving forward.
Do we have the estimates on the things that we talked about, or issues with Seven Mile and the sewage and all that? On the PowerPoint that you saw tonight are, are the proposed costs. Now again, that was taken out of the 2020 assessment and the costs at that time. Um, and also, we don't have documentation where we are on each of those today. I'm waiting for school to be out, and cameras to go in, unless that was done today when I was out.
Now, them numbers that you showed up here on the board, was that from OFCC?
Correct. Cause they said our sewage system was fair on that report, it said fair. Fair to poor in 2020, yeah, but we have backup going on, and we'll, we'll find out next week what that is, they're ready for the kids to get out, last I heard, unless that's changed then.
It, it hasn't, and I can tell you that we've had four A's back out there a couple times this week, um, we just, we have to deal with the problem until we can get the students out of there to go in with the cameras and see.
You know, whenever the levy was going on, I had a lot of people in the community, I talked to, you know, hundreds of people a week, I mean, anybody who knows me from this district, I'm out there all the time with my kids, at sporting events, I'm, I'm everywhere, talking to people. And, uh, you know, one of the things that I mentioned to people throughout the process is, people would come ask me, they'd say, voters would say, you know, what are the potential cuts if the levy doesn't pass? And, you know, I would tell them, like, hey, you know, as a board, we might have to look at, you know, closing buildings. And, you know, I had a lot of people say, well, do you have the room for that? Well, yeah, we do have the room. Well then, why are you waiting until a levy fails before you can do that? Why don't you show some financial responsibility with your money, with the money? And it got me thinking, why aren't we evaluating things? Why aren't we looking and planning and, and trying to be better with our money? If the voters don't wanna pass a levy to have those, we have to do what we gotta do, because the education of these kids is what's most important.
We have looked at this, I've looked at this six times since I've been on the board. And every time they brought it to us, there was a minimal cost to keep Seven Mile open, and I felt like it was important to have a community school, to have younger kids not bust across fifty miles of a district. And for three hundred thousand dollars, that was the number they brought to me in 2012, was three hundred thousand dollars to what would keep that open. And I felt like having a four-year-old or a five-year-old on a bus for forty-five minutes was not worth three hundred thousand dollars in the budget that we had. But I think, I, I've never voted to close Seven Mile, every time it's been on the chopping block. So we have looked at this over and over and over and over and over, and it's never been this bad, we've never had these, this many issues. And, you know, the severe of, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, hundred and twenty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, these, you know, these sort of bills. So we have looked at it over and over, we've looked at Seven Mile, we've looked at Baybeck, and it just never ha, it was never this severe.
And it's not getting better.
Well, and that's why I think they're asking for a plan to deal with, you know, expenses, like, what's our plan? But I don't think, how can we come up with a plan if we don't know what the expenses are yet? I mean, that's, that's my thought.
I, I feel like we're putting Band-Aids on it right now, but I also look at it like this, I've got grandkids in that building, and if they're walking up, we're, we gotta keep those kids safe, you know, so we're gonna keep slapping Band-Aids on it until we do have a plan? Because those kids deserve what the other kids in the district get as well, we gotta protect those kids and keep those kids safe, keep them in a good, healthy environment until we do get that plan. So, uh, we, we have to figure out what happens.
John's not here, is he? John Thomas is not here tonight, but there, there is a plan. There's a five-year, five-year plan, four-year plan that he presented on doing the work at Seven Mile. And it, it was going to cost roughly two hundred thousand a year, I think, something like that, to do that. It included roofing, it included the septic system or whatever it's, the sewage system and some other things. Has anybody, have we talked, I've talked to him, but have, have you talked to him, just pull that plan out to see?
He had, I mean, he had costs broken down, we looked at it in detail.
Yeah, there is a plan.
We're aware of the plan, and it wasn't brought out until this last sewage conversation came out.
See, I, I don't think a decision he's made denied, I just think that we need to make, we need to start making a plan. There needs to be a plan, so when the next time the levy doesn't pass, we're not sitting here trying to figure out what we're gonna do. There needs to be, right now, we need to start working on a plan, starting next month on how we're gonna get there.
Well, I'm probably gonna be the last one to speak on this, I think everybody else has spoke, but I've been on this board for ten years, and I've never voted whether to keep it open or to close it. And I'm talking about Seven Mile. Um, it's never made it to the point to where we've ever voted on, now I know Amy's the Now, I know Amy's the only person sitting up here that has voted to keep that building open. I'm not comfortable closing a building with what little bit of time has been put into it. We do not have an exit plan for that building, whether it's used for something else in this district, or, or we sell it, one of the two. So, I'm not gonna be in favor of closing any buildings, or definitely not gonna be in favor of reduction in force at all, until we know exactly where we're at. And we're not gonna know until July. We will know at the end of July where we are with our money. I mean, we've, we've got a May forecast, we've got, we've got forecasts every month. But we will not know the brass number until July thirty-first. And it's not fair for us to make any decisions based on the information we have right now. I mean, I, I'm gonna say it. I mean, our biannual budget looks like we might, we might get an extra three million dollars. I'm not saying we're getting it, but we might get it. So, that's where we're at. We don't know if we're gonna get it, but we think we are. So, that's kinda where.
On the May thirty-first vote, yes.
So, so that's kind of where I'm at with it.
And if people, people wanna influence that, talk to your congressman, for crying out loud. Those are the people who make those votes.
Well, I thought it was important to put this back on the agenda based on our work session conversation. And I know many of you've had some personal phone calls, I've had some personal meetings. And I think this is a topic that we have to talk about openly. I am excited about the Community Engagement Committee. We are gonna look at curriculum, finances. I'd like to look at the, what the OFCC plan is, and, and get some good community dialogue around that. We also have an outside presenter coming to our charge, Dr. Summers, to work on our strategic plan. And that will help us with some of this decision-making around budget and goals, and how we move forward. So, thank you for the conversation.
I, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to, you know, monthly at every meeting, if we kinda do an update of where we're at, and things we've been working on as far as this goes, whatever, you know, it is that we decided to do.
I could do quarterly.
I, I do wanna clarify just one thing, Kelly, on a comment I made, so that it doesn't get taken out of context. But like, when I talk about how we're gonna use those buildings, if we do keep Seven Mile open, we keep Bayback open, I'm not suggesting that we go back to the way things were. But I am suggesting that the smaller grades, the pre-K, the kindergarten, the first, and the second grade, keeping those kids closest to home. I think there, I think it's safer, I think it, I think it makes a lot of sense. Amy talked about it. So, I'm not suggesting that we go back to the way things were. But I think there would be value in the smallest, you know, pre-K for second, to do something like that. And I think that's a really good thing to have a conversation with teachers and community, and see where, where they're at on it.
I'd love to have futuristic conversations about what we see academics and facilities looking like for Edgewood in the future, versus going backwards and talking about what we're cutting, or what we're, I mean, it's, no wonder people kinda don't like to have these conversations. Or, when I'm reading the perception survey, I, I kind of am getting a clearer picture of why we are where we are. It's time to really be futuristic and think about, yeah, we may not have the money today to accomplish X, Y, Z, but how do we get there? And what are we doing to activate that? Maybe people would support levies if they saw something that they were gonna get from it, with newer facilities, and whatever that represents that they're thinking. But we, we do need, we do need to have conversations and futuristic thinking to revive ourselves, that's just my thought, but anyway. All right, enough for that? You were motion. That was a discussion. Next item. First of all, in our contracts, anytime we do a reduction in force, we have to meet with employees beforehand, so many days, depending on if it's classified or certified. This motion to approve reduction in force, with the plan on the PowerPoint that said we could come up with another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings, if there's an appetite for that. If the board would approve that tonight, then we would go and work, and, and work on the master contract, and find those positions, and talk to the people. So, really, the motion I'm looking for tonight is where do we go? Are we going to approve future reductions, or not? So, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm looking, I'm gonna go off of my agenda here. I'm looking for a motion to approve the reductions in force. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, would you like to discuss this, or you guys wanna vote? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
No.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
No.
Mr. Gabber?
No.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
No.
Mr. York?
No.
Okay, next item, pay to participate. We also shared that one of our plans, if we needed to find cost reductions, would be to increase the pay to participate. There has been some discussion of what's the difference between an activity fee for vocals, may it be National Honor Society, band versus athletic program. So, I had originally made a proposal to the board to have a discussion around increasing the pay to play for extracurricular activities to five hundred dollars, no cap. Transportation to be provided for teams with twenty-five or more players, and for games, twenty-five miles out or more. That's just to start the discussion, so I'm looking for a motion.
I'm looking for a motion to increase the fees to pay to participate. Mr. Pressler, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, discussion? So, so we're, we're going with extracurricular activities now? I mean, at one point it said OHSAA.
So, basically, we looked at the supplementals and divided them into, if it's something like Honor Society, or those seasonal, where you're on, in a play for a few days, but it's not a whole season, that would be more of the hundred and fifty dollar activity fee.
Student council.
Student council being activity fee.
Academic team.
Activity fee.
National Honor Society.
Activity fee.
Core leaders.
That would be.
Extracurricular.
Extracurricular.
Same amount.
Same amount.
Core leaders, band.
Band, same amount.
Cheerleading?
Same amount. How many, do we know how many teams we have with twenty-five plus players? I'm gonna say it's only football, or? That's, well, I guess it depends on how many people you're taking. Yeah, it would be a bus of twenty-five, yep, only football. Band?
Boys and girls soccer.
Boys and girls soccer, core leaders? Well, but it would be boys soccer going to one location, and then girls soccer. So, wouldn't be.
Yeah, but if they get a varsity, you'll pick thirty, thirty-two to thirty-five, depending.
So, we're saying that, speaking to that point, on a Monday night, or whatever night through the week that the boys or girls play, we're going to send all the teams together on a bus?
No, no. Actually, I got this from, I met with superintendent, so Coda's been doing this for years. If they don't have games so far away, or they don't have at least twenty-five on a bus, they're saying it's less than that. Parents can certainly volunteer to drive, you provide proof of insurance, they take a couple cars and they go. It's a way to save some money. The question is, do you have an appetite for that or not? I used to do it as a mom. I used to do it as a assist, assistant, assistant soup and a mom. I would take the girls' basketball.
I, I personally don't have an appetite for the transportation part piece of this. I think there's too much liability. My son drove himself to a game, and another student hit him from behind. I mean, every single team.
Yep, yep.
I don't, I don't like that. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, there's just too much liability involved in that. And I mean, we've got small buses, right? If we've got.
If two vans, yes.
Got vans, we can take to games.
We sure do.
So, let's, let's talk about the numbers, right? So, with what we spend on, on extracurricular, supplemental, AD, AD secretary, junior high, so, with what we spend on all those programs, it's over a million dollars. And when we originally started talking about this, we said pay to play at nine hundred dollars is where we thought we were gonna have to be. And I had a real problem with that for a lot of different reasons. We, as, as you start filling this back, you need eleven hundred kids just to break even, playing in multiple sports to be, to be able to cover the cost of that. We didn't have that many student athlete, or that many extracurricular students in, in one or more sports last year. So, no matter what we do, this is gonna come at a cost to the district. And I'm only talking, covering the cost of coaches and so forth. We're not even talking about.
Maybe I'm a little bit, right.
We're not talking about transportation, we're not talking about maintenance, we're not talking about equipment, we're not, we're not talking about any of those, any of those things. So, I, I look at the number of students that participated in sports, seven through twelve, and it's about thirty percent. It's, it's based off of the numbers that I saw, roughly thirty percent. That means there's seventy percent of the students in this district that don't participate. At five hundred dollars pay to play, we know we are still losing money. And I think most of us are probably willing to accept some cost at the district to be able to provide that. I mean, it wasn't that long ago, we had that college signing day, and I don't remember how many students that we had from the high school, but there was quite a few that are going on to, does anybody remember how many that was?
Ten. I would say twelve, but it's ten.
Ten.
There were ten, one that showed up, but there were nine on the signing day, but there's ten total.
So, we've got ten students, and I don't even know if that counts Aaron Castro, and some of the others that are going for some of the things that, that, you know, that they're doing. So, there are kids from this district that go on and play at the next level. There are kids from this district that get opportunities to, to play college-level sports. I think it's very important that we have a program with that. I'm with Gary, I don't have the stomach for letting students drive themselves to games, or, you know, piling into a car. I think that just opens us up to liability or, or accidents. But I know we can't just say we're gonna do this the way we've always done it, not charging it. One of the things that I talk to with a lot of people in the district, and out there where I live, you've got a lot of kids that are FFA, you've got a lot of kids that are select league. And I have a lot of parents tell me, I really don't care if the school has sports, they're there for education. But then, I had a lot of parents that said we've gotta have sports for next year. So, we gotta find a happy median here. I, I can't support nine hundred, and I was very vocal about that. I don't really like five hundred, but it's better than, it's better than nine. I think it certainly is a good place to start. I think it'd probably be a good opportunity for us all to kinda have some conversation around what the dollar amount needs to, to look like. If I, if I remember correctly, it's about two hundred thousand dollars in savings, right?
I don't recall.
Probably two, the prop, I think it was two, two twenty-five.
Well, I think it's two twenty-five at five hundred, Mark. Sorry, we've had so many different scenarios, and it was.
Two twenty-five, yeah.
So, we, if we do this without any of the personnel cuts, you're at just over six hundred thousand in savings going into next year. That's not, that's not what we said we needed to be, but it's better than what we're.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause we're at six ninety-seven, or five ninety-seven.
Five ninety-seven.
Yes.
On the five-year forecast adjusted today, yeah. So, it gets us closer to that, to that point.
Until we figure out where we're at. And you look at, you look at Tawawanda, you look at Ross, I mean, they're eight fifty, nine twenty-five. Had somebody tell me Lakota's four fifty.
Five fifty, I think.
Is that what it is? I got told four fifty. Hamilton's a hundred bucks. I mean, I'll be honest with you, it costs more to play some of the, some of the PWE sports than it does to play some of the high school sports, for sure.
Any more discussion on this, or would we like to go ahead and vote on it?
Would you like to? I, I think we have to go into this just understanding that we're not gonna recruit the cost, total cost, this is just a way to offset some of the costs, so. I, I, you know, philosophically, I don't agree with pay to play at all. But, I think there's some, I, I understand the desire for our kids, the seniors especially, to get to participate, so I'm willing to accept this. But, I think we need to know that it's not going to cover the total cost. We don't really know, there's a lot of things we don't, we don't know what the total cost could be. We don't know what the total compensation's going to be from this pay-to-play program, because the numbers of kids could change. And they could be a significant number, so we really don't know. I, I, that's why I have a hard time throwing around numbers, because somebody will take the video and go back, and Mr. Messerschmidt said five ninety-seven or six ninety-seven on this night. We don't know, we don't really know what this is gonna be.
Well, I mean, I think based off of the participants we had last year, the closest number we really could come up with was eleven hundred dollars, to, to get us to breaking.
So, I, five hundred is, I, I don't like that, but I'm willing to accept that, to give kids a chance to play.
I'm having a hard time with this, 'cause I just don't see it as a, you know, like, right now, I feel like it's a temporary fix. And if I felt like we had a plan in place, something that was sustainable, but to keep passing all these expenditures down to the parents, I'm struggling with it. And I feel like we could do, there's, you know, if we had a plan where we're looking internally on ways that we could do it without, you know, such, such as, you know, reduction, eliminating buildings, doing things like that, moving people around. But, I'm, I'm struggling voting for this. I mean, I'm for, I'm for the hundred and twenty-five dollars, but right now, to, to continue doing what we're doing, I'm, I keep doing.
I mean, I don't wanna kick it down the road, because I didn't even make a decision on this tonight. People are gonna have to prepare, you know? I mean, that's why I think people are gonna have to prepare for the school fees now. There's gonna be some people who can't pay that, there's gonna be some people who can't pay this. I know there's been people on Facebook and all that that have offered to pay for kids to play. Hopefully, those people will be there to offer to pay those school fees if they need to, because some of them are gonna run about five hundred anyway, different families, not one kid, but. Lakota's been that way for a long time, that's their activity fee. It's not a pay to participate, it's an activity fee. And I think they pay that for whatever activity they're in. We're saying this is just for, you know, cheerleading, and not for National Honor Society. I don't know what kid would pay that to be a National Honor. But, I, I think that eleven hundred is a skewed number. Eleven hundred dollars for a person to participate is a lot different for a person in golf versus football. Football has how many umpires or referees, or whatever they are. And, you know, golf, sorry, I'm not, I'm not about baseball. You know, like, golf, do they even have a referee or an umpire? Do they just have people keeping their little things with their little pencils? You know what I mean? I don't think it costs a hundred dollars for golf, I think that's a skewed number. So, we're asking people who participate in these sports and extracurriculars to kinda, you know, average it out and pass the buck along. Because I know that it costs more for football. Football takes in more money, not if people, as many people go, you know, watch golf or whatever. But, I think this is a start, and I don't think we should wait to talk about this later on down the road. I think we're gonna have to start preparing, especially football parents, if they have, you know, potentially two or three kids in football, it's a hefty bill.
I'll say, just an observation, by the time we finish with these fees, there're gonna be more than the average person would've paid for the, the income tax that we just lost. And I think there's gonna be probably three hundred and fifty people out there, which is about what we needed to have won that election, roughly. And then there were four hundred, gonna be four hundred people out there that's going to have now six, seven, eight hundred dollars in fees that you're gonna have to pay that they might've, man, I wish I'd gone and voted, voted. Because it's gonna cost a lot more the way we're running. We're gonna have to run things down to recoup the money, than it would've been. It's just an observation from, somebody's been doing it for a long time.
I think I would like to amend this before we vote, if, if I've got enough backing for it. The transportation will be provided for all teams, regardless of players or mileage. Looking for a motion? I think I can amend it.
Let's just vote, yeah.
I'm gonna look for a motion for the pay to participate fees as amended. which would include transportation. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Include the transportation? Oh, wait, 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 okay, I'm sorry. To, to provide it?
Yes.
Don't say participate or include.
Oh, no. For fun.
To provide the transportation.
Do I have a second?
Second, sorry.
This is Ashcraft. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Yes. Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
No.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you. I know these have been difficult conversations. Now, we can start putting some details to these plans and move forward. I appreciate the energy that you've put forth into this process. I, just for the sake of time, I'm going to just recognize two academic successes. Very proud of our eight seniors that earned a By Literacy Seal this year and ask Pam to get those, that on our website and Facebook. And the second acknowledgement out to Mrs. Fields, who took her eighth-grade chorus group to Kings Island for a musical festival, and they received a Superior Award. So, very pleased of our academic performances and work. And that concludes my information items.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers. Next, we have items from board members. Mr. York, would you like to start, please?
Sure. Passing around the Student Success Newsletter from Butler Tech. Butler Tech had their graduation on Monday last week at the Centaugh Center at Xavier. Great graduation ceremony. There were several Edgewood kids that were part of that. And just some highlights, real quickly. They have a mechatronics program there that's a computer, high-tech type of engineering program. There were 26 seniors that graduated from that program. And all 26 of those kids graduated from Butler Tech with a high school diploma and an associate's degree. And half of those 26 were going to go to engineering, to the university to study engineering. So, it's some very valid opportunities for kids to go to Butler Tech. Two girls gave us a presentation on Tuesday night, because we had a board meeting Tuesday night after the Monday graduation. Those two young ladies did a study on Alzheimer's. They go to the Bioscience Center, did an outstanding job with that. One of those girls has a free ride to continue her study. And she said this, the Ohio State University. And then the other young lady was going to Tuskegee for her college education on a free ride as well. So, a lot of great things happening at Butler Tech. The Edgewood graduation on Saturday, I just want to say thanks. You guys did a wonderful job, all you people that put that together. And it was just a real proud moment to be able to see all those kids graduate. One of them walking across the stage, his last name was York. One of my kids. And, and we talked a little bit. I said, we might be cousins, but we've got to get together here and see. Anyway, great, a great event. You guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you, Mr. York.
Yep.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
So, this past week, I got to do the fifth-grade bike ride with my daughter. And, man, that was, that was a lot of fun. And I, I think that's a super cool tradition that we do here. EIS, the fifth-grade teachers do a phenomenal job with it, all the support that goes into it from the parents and the Butler County Sheriff's Department. It was a, it was a really good, it was a really good event. I very much appreciate it. I'll be honest with you, though, I feel more drained after this meeting tonight than I did after everything, the mile bike ride. Because this has been, this has been an emotionally taxing couple of months. And for those of y'all that are sitting there in the audience watching, you can probably tell that up here, we all haven't been on the same page. There've been some, there's been some difference of opinions. But I, I do feel like we, we've come together as much as we can. And I think we did a pretty good job trying to keep this as far away from the kids as we could. So, you know, I just, I'm, I'm glad that, you know, we were able to see past some of our differences. And maybe a lot of folks out there don't agree with what we did, and these were hard decisions to make. But I, you know, I feel like, you know, as a board, we tried to find common ground where we, where we could. And, and one thing that's very apparent to me is that everybody cares deeply about this, about this district. And Ms. Jaeger, you brought up a point tonight about Kelly and Patty and, you know, that they are doing phenomenal work for us behind the scenes. Kelly is a ball of energy and, and she just is awesome to have here leading the district. And Patty, I tell you, you, you do the work of three people and hopefully, we can find you some work-life balance, because what you're doing is not sustainable. So, I just wanted to personally recognize you guys for all that you're doing. It's been a pretty tough, you know, six, eight weeks. And probably ain't going to get any better anytime soon. But I think we'll, we'll keep working like we are, we'll figure this out.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mr. Pressler. Mr. Pressler? This is Ashcraft.
I think they've heard us talking outside.
I am in agreement. So, with this time-
She said yes.
Who was it?
Who was it?
Well, according to our survey, people are not comfortable sharing such information.
I think I'm looking right there.
At this time, I'm going to look for a motion to move to executive session for the following reasons. Consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official in preparing or conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with a public employee concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0, page 17.
9:41.
Shoot, wait.
Time for bid.
Five numbers, okay.
Left. I'm going to, I'm going to look for a motion to approve that administrative, certified, classified, exempted supplemental employees as presented.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Mr. Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
I'm staying.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
We'll look for a motion-
Does Pressler vote on the previous one?
Yes.
Yeah.
For a resolution-
I just seconded it. I didn't get a vote.
To terminate an employee.
I voted yes, but...
Mrs. Ashcraft, seconded by Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
This is the termination one.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion to approve an MOU.
Motion to approve the MOU with the-
For the ROTC.
For the ROTC program. As presented. Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
We'll look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, Mr. York, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Sorry.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mr. Pressler?